We start. And we start with the roll call.
Chairman Hartsfield is absent, Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Nielsen.
Here.
Right, we have the Pledge of Legions. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding. Item twenty twenty-two dash oh-two Verizon Wireless Micro Facility. Request by Verizon Wireless, the applicant, the city of Woodland Park property owner. Constructed sixty-foot concealed antenna facility at the front west side, the existing woodland aquatic center. Designed to complement the existing building architecture and conceal the V Z W antennas and equipment. Within at eleven, sorry, one eleven North Baldwin Street. Lot one woodland aquatic center, which is the in the public semi-public zone district. This is my meeting, an item that had been originally scheduled for February ninth is rescheduled now.
Um, Lee. Do we want to take a minute to approve the minutes from the last meeting first, or do we want to do that later?
Thought we could do that.
Sorry.
Does anyone regard to the minutes have a motion for approval or corrections?
Move to approve.
I'll sign in.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we proved approved unanimously. Now, we're zooming back to the public hearing. Um, we have the staff presentation, CJ, are you doing that soon?
Yes, sir.
If you please proceed.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Chair. So as stated, this is a request by Verizon Wireless for approval of a special use permit for a sixty-foot concealed antenna facility. The facility in question is proposed to be constructed within the western portion of the woodland woodland aquatic center located at. One eleven North Baldwin. Lot one woodland park aquatic center is a two point one zero acre lot that was previously subdivided. From the forty-two acre tract of land lying east of Baldwin Avenue and owned by the school district. The construction of the woodland aquatic center includes a water slide as seen on this current slide on the left. With a total building height of thirty-three and a half feet, which was achieved through a height variance. And the aquatic center is look is a total of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five square feet. And contains two pools, locker rooms, changing cabanas, a lobby and a parking lot with thirty-four spaces. This current application is being processed as a special use permit due to the fact that the proposed new antenna has a total height of sixty feet. The proposed facility will be fully concealed with a structure designed to complement the existing building architecture. The subject property is zone publicly public semi-public land as seen on the left-hand side of the slide. The site is bordered by Baldwin Street to the west, woodland park high school to the east and north. And Gateway Elementary to the south. To the west of the subject property, North Baldwin Street are parcels zone community commercial where the commercial businesses are existing. Woodland Park High School and Gateway Elementary exist exist on the same parcel and are zone public slash semi-public as well. The proposed communication facility will be located within the western portion of the subject property nor bordering North Baldwin Street as seen on the right-hand side of the slide. On the current slide is the original proposed site plan, which is also attached within your staff report. The application proposed a five-foot wide utility easement for power to run from the proposed facility to the existing electrical transformer on the northwest side of the property. The applicant is also proposing a twelve-foot wide access and utilities running north and south. Connecting to a proposed five-foot wide easement for fiber that will connect to a proposed two-by-three fiber handheld. The lease area that the applicant is proposing is a total of six hundred and twenty-five feet. This current slide is the applicant's revised proposed site plan. This document is contained within the applicant response packet that was attached within your staff report. The revised site plan was a direct result from staff's comments on the original proposal. Where the original and revised site plan differ the most is the location of the proposed fiber and power lines. Currently, a utility easement is existing on the west side, on the west side of the subject property and per staff's recommendation. The applicant placed the power and fiber lines within it as much as possible. The revised proposed site plan is what is desirable. On the left-hand side of the side of the slide is the applicant's elevation of the proposed facility. Which shows its proximity to the existing woodland aquatic center. As depicted in this elevation, the existing building is thirty-three and a half feet in height. And their proposed tower is sixty feet in height. Their proposed facility will be twenty-six and a half feet higher than the highest point of the existing building. On the right-hand side of the slide is a color rendering of the proposed tower. Staff asked the applicant to submit this information with the applicant response packet. The rendering shows how the applicant is attempting to match the existing color and architecture on the existing site. As you will see later on, staff will work with the applicant to ensure the proposed architecture matches what with what is existing. Staff analyzed municipal code section eighteen point six one point zero four zero in accordance with this application. A, the proposed facility should have a benefit to the city. Their proposal will not endanger the public health. The proposed facility will not affect the value of properties. The proposed development will be in harmony with the area. The proposed facility complies with these four criteria. The proposed development must conform to the city's comprehensive master plan. The proposed development should conform to the provision standards and requirements of all city regulations. Their proposal will be designated to accommodate traffic impacts. Items E and G comply while item F may comply. There are currently one significant concern regarding the location of the proposed easements. The proposed facility may comply if the applicant is willing to comply with municipal code. And use the existing established utility easements that are available. As you previously saw on the revised site plan, the applicant submitted a revised site plan, which is desirable for staff. Excuse me. The proposal should be designated construction and constructed appropriately. The proposal should be maintained with adequate water supply. The facility should not increase public danger. The development is required to meet all architectural design requirements. Items H through J on the slide comply while item K may comply. The proposed facility will be painted to match the existing structure and all telecommunication materials will be enclosed within the proposed structure. Staff will be requesting additional design modifications, so the structure will better harmonize with the existing building. Applications were referred to the city departments and external review agencies listed on the slide. Staff has received no public comments on the proposed facility. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission is that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of a special use permit. For a sixty-foot concealed antenna facility at the front west side. Of the existing building architecture and concealed concealed V Z W antennas and equipment within at one-one-one North Baldwin Street. Lot one woodland aquatic center in the public slash semi-public lands zone, subject to the following conditions. Condition number one. An updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the red line plans must be approved by the city before any zoning development permits will be issued. Two, an agreement for the use of the city property must be finalized and signed by all parties prior to issuance of any ZDP will be issued. Three, the applicant must secure necessary easements to finalize the location of and ensure all power and telecommunication lines are run underground. Lastly, four, coordinate with staff to modify the tower designs to better harmonize with the existing WAC building. That is my presentation commissioners and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Just a couple to remind me of the the piece of real estate that the city owns. Um, how many square feet or acres to does the city own? There within the campus of the, you know, the school district.
So the subject property is two point one zero acres. Um, so which is lot one here. Um, the school district owns, uh, the parcel or the property to the north. So the what the, let's see here. This is a better view here. So you can see the woodland park high school to the right-hand side. And then Gateway Elementary on the bottom of the slide.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember how large the lot was that the aquatic center set on.
Yep, so that's that's two point one zero acres.
And just for information. Was there any discussion of placing this tower on Gold Hill where the other? Microwave towers are located.
Yes, there was, but unfortunately, uh, there is not available space up there.
No room at the end.
And then there's also the applicant probably can better address some of this. Um, but also in terms of, I believe, coverage mapping and getting the signal where it needs to go. Um, so do ask that question of the applicant again, please.
And then the third question, um, were there any concerns from the high school or from the school district?
Uh, during our referral period, we did send this to the school district and we received no comments back.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Quick question, this, I'm not sure this is following Carol's thought or not, but. Is there is would there is there space on the property if another if if another communication provider? Was interested by the service, the city could make that available as well, or is this is this set such that? Between its location and easements and such too, does it leave room for another one if someone if someone were to be interested?
Um, I don't know about an additional structure. Um, it would start to probably look a little odd if we had multiple towers out there. Um, because so much of the site really, when you look at the the aerial. I don't know if you've got a more close-up CJ on the PowerPoint of that. Um, but I don't know that there's a lot of really readily available land area. Um, and so the other question would be more around requiring co-location on this particular.
On that tower, yeah. A- and that is where I was going with this because I I had heard that there was no more room on Gold Hill and. Uh, this, this is obviously a, uh. Asset to the community, but if someone else wanted to co-locate in the tower with Verizon, consider that. As an option.
It's for absolute interest that. Another question, is there representative from the applicant would would you speak?
Yes, good evening, uh, my name is Kelly Harrison. I'm representing Verizon Wireless, um, Verizon's architect is here this evening as well, in case there's any questions relating to design. Um. So Verizon is proposing a sixty-foot enclosed antenna structure at the aquatic center. Um, thank you CJ for the detailed presentation at this point, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I guess the question that just came up, um, would would it be amenable to Verizon to? Um, rent space in their tower?
Yes, so the structure can accommodate a co-locator beneath Verizon. Um, the city during kind of initial discussion, they had talked about wanting to potentially put signage up immediately below Verizon's antennas or possibly a clock. Um, if another carrier were to locate beneath Verizon, that would probably create interference and so I think the city would have to decide. For that lower centerline, if they were to put up signage and or and or a clock that it could interfere with a potential co-locator. But it is available should some another carrier want to co-locate.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you, I like the way that it, I was worried how it was gonna look, so I appreciate the attention to detail and the fact that it's, you know, gonna be enclosed and you're matching all the colors and.
Thank you.
And it'll kind of blow, so I appreciate that.
You agree with all the conditions placed by the staff, your application?
I do, um, there, I think the the one condition, let me grab it. Um, relating to. I believe no zoning approval until the lease is fully executed. We may want to pull, um. Sorry.
And that's a condition number two, Kelly.
Yeah, so condition number two says an agreement, um, has to be finalized and signed by our all parties prior to issuance of any ZDP. Uh, we will be, um. Depending on how long it takes to get the lease fully approved and signed, um, it may be in our best interest to tease apart. Uh, the zoning approval from the lease, um, only because we're gonna run up against shot clock, um, in early May. And, um, if it takes us longer than just a couple of weeks to fully execute the agreement, which may require its own hearing process, we're kind of waiting to hear that process. Um, it may be best to finalize the ZDP and then kind of allow the the lease to process independently.
Staff give him a little more than. My application. That works. Can't issue ZDP for some property that they don't have a right to build on, right to build on comes from the lease.
Correct.
I certainly could be discussing if the ZDP had required some negotiation discussions, I would assume those could go on, but the ZDP couldn't be finalized without.
It could not be fully issued, correct.
Can I ask, the, we have a draft lease document in our package, was that prepared by you or your office or?
It was prepared, um, by Verizon's counsel and we did negotiate it, um, with the city. Um, and it was ultimately, um, we had incorporated the language and the changes that were requested and so we have. An agreement for the macro facility that is essentially, uh. Vetted and I don't want to use the word approved, but it is okayed by the city manager at this point for. Um, final approvals by whatever public hearing processes is going to be required, that's what I'm. We haven't established that yet. So the lease language. It could be considered final at this point, but it needs the final stamp of approval for signatures.
Might mention this, I don't know if this is a condition or anything, it just that. For city staff to call the attention of the city, we, the point we made before, could others use it, there's a right of first refusal in pair of fifteen of the draft lease. It sounds more like some opportunity for. What was less seen to ensure exclusivity. Which. Is just to look at, I'm, I'm.
Okay, thank you.
We have a city attorney to review the language of the contract and consider, you might might look at that.
Okay, thank you, I wrote that down.
We're not approving the form of the lease now, that's, said you'll have to do the city attorney will work it, they'll do that. Okay. Okay, if he's available, some other questions come up, but, uh, thank you for the present. Um, let me ask, we have any, anyone signed up, Dave, for? Public to speak on this?
No one has signed up.
All right, well, I should open the public hearing, babe. Is there anyone on? Online?
No one has their hand raised.
Okay. Going, going. Gone, I guess. Close, close the public hearings. That still remains for the mission to. And then if they have any further questions for staff or like applicants available as well.
I guess I would just make the comment that I think this is probably a very good location for this facility. And especially the effort to accommodate the design and architecture of the new tower with the existing aquatic center. And certainly. I'm I'm sure all the engineering has been completed to say this is provide for enhanced service for the customers. I think this is a good project.
Ken Cummins?
I'll add that I did go by and drive the street Baldwin Street and. Some of the forest edge areas looking for views of the aquatic center to see how this might impact somebody's view. I believe the Aspen. Commons Town Homes or condominium, I'm sorry, uh, is the only property that is residential. That somebody might even see it that I could detect. So I think it is a good location for not affecting adjacent property values and things like that from my. Survey of the area, so it does seem to be. Uh, a good coordinated spot to put something that you really don't want to have to put in the middle of town.
No, I'd only say within within the, um, scope of what we can improve, I have no problem with this and I do think it'll be an asset to the community.
Show anything else?
Nice, second, third and fourth.
I concur as well, this appears to be a good location for this. They ask, people have no further comments or questions, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What would that motion be?
To accept their plan as as is, or is that?
Subject to the conditions proposed by the city staff?
Yeah.
And a second?
A second.
No further discussion? Call the question?
Uh, Commissioner Harvey, yes. Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
All right, motions carried unanimously. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm just glad it's not one of those big fake looking pine trees.
That's what I was worried about. It's a monument. Because I saw it coming down, I remember, but hmm. Uh, so. Yeah, there is one that's over by.
Next we have items.
Oh, yeah, there's.
Twenty twenty-two oh-six. Stone Ridge Village filing number five plaque. Request by Dana Duncan, Stone Ridge Village LLC to approve a major subdivision of seven point nine five acres. Platted into eighteen lots with easements and road right-ofways in the Stone Ridge Village planned unit development. Situated west of the existing intersection of Firestone Drive and Stone Ridge Drive. Located in the south one-half of the northeast quarter. Of section fourteen township twelve south range sixty-nine west of the sixth P M. P M in the city of Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado, everyone follow that? In any, A, but we we know for our documents that we're referring to. Um, this will be a public hearing tonight, but initially we have a presentation from the staff.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'd like to make a statement before we we start.
Okay.
And, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna start with my statement with an apology to the applicant and the owner. Staff and commission members and member of the public here. Because I know when you hear I have to say and what I have determined I should do. It's going to have a major impact on conducting the hearing tonight. I'd like to disclose that I have known Skip. Since nineteen eighty-seven, when I moved to Woodland Park, the director of the planning department here in Woodland Park, I worked with him, him and his father. On several projects that turned out very well. And I value Skip's friendship and knowledge, I learned so much from Skip and Brad. Uh, they they helped me become a better planner. I'd also like to say that in two thousand and four. When the Stone Ridge P U D project were king for the city for changes zoning to P U D. For the P U D final development plan and for the preliminary plat, I was a private citizen. And I I should say that I live two hundred and ten feet from this property. And, uh, so I've been watching the property, been observing it for a long time and have, uh. Have a deep interest in how this property has developed. That being said, in two thousand and four, again, I was a private citizen, I was approached by several of the neighbors that were concerned about that project. For some reason, they knew I was a city planner. And I had experience in that and they asked me to help them defeat that particular project so close to our neighborhood. Well, I advised them that's not the right approach. The 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 approach is not to say why you don't want something to happen, but say you want something to happen. Subject to certain conditions, restrictions, so on and so forth, that would address the issues that you had. The issues that the neighborhood primarily had was using the street that we live on, Michael Lane. Uh, as a connector into the Stone Ridge, um, development site. And at that time, and probably like 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 a lot of neighborhoods in two thousand and four, there were awful lot of children in our area. And because of that, and because of the concern of traffic, uh, safety, so on and so forth, we asked the planning commission. To approve project such the removal of the connection between the northwards subdivision from Michael Lane and I live. Um, uh, to remove that connection based on those concerns. By commission, the city council agreed and removed that, uh, provision from the plan. Since that time. I've still been thinking about the project and thinking about that and still thinking about that concern. I've had discussions with Kit, Skip, excuse me, Skip. With Sally, Karen and others about the, uh, about that connection between Northwoods. And, um, Stone Ridge. That was all done prior to the submission of the applications last fall. That that concern for 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 that access to between the two sites is is still valid. I don't believe a city street ought to be occurring there. But I believe that, uh, in emergency access to the site is probably appropriate. I'd also like to disclose that I created a memo. Sent that out yesterday, which I believe is now totally inappropriate. Included a lot of information that justified my 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 reasoning behind that. That information. Was not shared with the the packet that went out. It was not shared with the people that had an interest in this particular project. So therefore, you. It was not really part of the the hearing process. Saying all that, I am going to excuse myself for hearing this request tonight. I know that has a direct impact on the ability to have a quorum. But I, because of those things I just stated, because of particularly the the memo, I'm going to excuse myself for participating. And again, I apologize to the commission.
Okay, um. I believe Commissioner Larson is correct that if he is accusing himself in this matter that the four of us do not constitute quorum. And cannot take action on the matter tonight.
That is correct.
Without, I believe that, um, absent absolute quorum, the remainder of us are in a position to continue the matter another time. I guess we would do that. Believe the next, the next time it could. You would. Um, the next time that's available. Be April thirteenth. Now, this is an in is an inconvenience to the applicant and to any other members of the public who wish to comment on this time. But I don't, I don't see any alternative, we're just not, we're not legally able to act without a without a quorum, a minimum, a minimum of five.
We, I think we can propose a special meeting.
That is correct. Um, unfortunately, I am not available next week. Um, the week after would be when we, uh, would do our code review. Um, and I know that that's a huge priority for us to to continue to work on that. And I've been reluctant to infringe on that time, but if it pleases the commission, we could certainly, um. Set the hearing for the the first part of that meeting on March twenty. set the hearing for the the first part of that meeting on March twenty-third. Partly because, like I said, I'm not available at all next week, so.
Neither am I, so. I don't know how the motion would be made for us to consider a special meeting prior to our work session on the twenty-third.
That same day or another day that week?
Wouldn't, wouldn't be a special meeting if it were two weeks from today.
It'd just be thrown in with their meeting.
It'd just be, it'd just be a meeting following my work session.
Correct. Okay, yeah, that's easier than trying to establish a special meeting, yeah.
I think the staff was looking to suggest that that didn't work, didn't work best for them, but obviously we can.
Was the code project it doesn't work for? But we can, because this is an unusual and extraordinary circumstance, and I'm kind of I said, I'm, it's, it's not, nothing about this is great, but the the applicant does, like most developments, development is a financial issue, financial concern. So what, I know they would appreciate what we could do to get it scheduled sooner rather than later.
Time certainly can be, can can I, is reasonable to ask the applicant about his schedule too, just to make certain two weeks from tonight works instead of?
That'd be March twenty-third.
Same time, same match, Jim.
Yes, sir.
So we would use the, we would hear the case first at six thirty or shortly after, and then go into a work session to discuss the code revision, correct?
Okay, that's the wish of the balance of the.
Well, yeah, the other long poll is Ken's availability, availability. Ken Hart, too.
We can certainly vet that between now and then, but for the purposes of action tonight, we would need you to continue the item to a date in time certain. And if we don't have a quorum at that point, then we end up doing another continuance.
And that's March twenty-third?
Yes, sir, at six thirty P M.
Okay. Have a motion to continue the matter to March twenty-third?
Yes, do, I I'll make that motion. Do I need to read the name of the case out loud? No, okay, it's a long. I I'll make the motion then to move the consideration or to continue the consideration of agenda item four B to March twenty-third.
At six thirty P M?
Six thirty P M.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Yeah, our apologies. I hope you understand that there's there's nothing, nothing else we could do here.
And Larry, for the record, I didn't read your memo because I knew I wasn't supposed to. I didn't either.
Hey. Remaining item on our gingers night is reports. Does the staff have any this evening?
I did want to follow up on something that from your February ninth.
We could maybe have the conversation in the hallway. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to follow up something from your February ninth public hearing, specifically the Haven at Paradise. Staff had gotten things a little out of sequence in terms of I'm sending a final plat to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board before it came to you all. You were very gracious in managing to continue on without direct feedback from that board. But we did send that to Prab, and they discussed it last evening. And we are including their comments with what goes to city council. And just to relate you all, the feedback we got was them noting that in twenty nineteen, the preliminary plat for the Haven at Paradise, at that time, Prab recommended fire mitigation plan for the dense forested areas and recommended accepting park capital fees to be used within the top of Paradise, Paradise Estates and Thunderbird subdivisions for Parker Trail Development. So specifically, last evening, the applicant, one of the representatives, Jonathan James with Ventas LLC, who is also the property owner, he was there for that meeting. And they talked about the the final plat that you all had reviewed on February ninth and that Lot twenty-five versus track B, that same piece of ground and what its status should be. And noted, they noted and were aware that Planning Commission added to their recommendations that that Lot twenty-five be reverted to track B is approved on the preliminary plat. Subsequently to that, on February twenty-eighth, the applicant submitted a letter stating that they would be reverting Lot twenty-five back to the original track B, consistent with your recommendation. And that would be private open spaces originally planned. The note here says Prab supports track B as originally planned. The board requested consideration of future soft access points opportunities providing potential trail connectivity. And Mr. James stated that the consideration of an internal trail network across properties as well. The board explained that they would, as they work through the master plan project, they are learning from the community that trail and trail connectivity is so important. And Mr. James stated that he would like to continue to work with the board to review future development and how we can accommodate those potential connections. The board appreciated that opportunity for the discussion with Mr. James and his willingness to listen and the desire to do what is possible for the betterment of the community. So that recommendation from Prab, their comments, as well as Mr. James' letter acknowledging this board's recommendation, that's all going to city council. And they are scheduled to hear that item next Thursday, the sixteenth of March at seven P M.
Is that the final plat would have the same, same condition, the same note out that Commissioner Larson, I remember called Red at the meeting, that he would, they would revert to that, the original wording?
The original wording from the preliminary plat should show up on the final plat and then that that subject parcel will be labeled as track B once again, as consistent with the preliminary plat.
Very good.
And there would not be a consideration then of using area parks to meet the requirement for open space. You know, there was a, you know, there was the consideration that Chimney Park, for instance, would be used in lieu of the dedication of open space for that plat.
We've been treating that as, this is a separate issue since all of those other open space and park requirements have been met previously. So it was really the 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 issue of a prior commitment that this would also be open space. Okay, so that this piece was not necessary to meet those, those other requirements. Okay.
Is there, is there a parks and recreation fee associated with each unit or each property?
I don't remember. We talked about that at the last meeting. It, CJ may be able to help.
Yeah, so there is, it's based off each single family lot that they are.
This is plating in order of a couple thousand dollars per lot?
Yes, I apologize. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I'd have to look at my notes, but yes, there is.
I think we listed it in the staff report also for that item last year.
And the city council would be in a position to consider waiving some or all of that fee in return for.
No, they cannot charter, forgive that.
They can't use that to acquire further interest in the track B.
So I just wanted to circle back and let you know that we were plugging that that oversight on our part. And all of that information is going to city council for their review. That's what I, oh, and then I guess the other thing to note was I know some of the commission members attended the city council work, work session related to short-term rentals that was on March second. There is no direction with what needs to come back to planning commission at this point. In fact, they have asked for additional data. So we're, we're looking at how we can potentially obtain some of that. There's definite interest in the number of short-term rental units that are potentially owner occupied versus those that are not. So I think to clarify some of that, and I I just don't remember some of the other things that they're kind of trying to, trying to look for.
But the moratorium ends in June, correct?
It does, and I believe they're at this next meeting next week, going to take a first reading of extending that moratorium again.
When does the, when does the moratorium have to be put in place again? How much before the expiration in order to avoid the same problem we had? Extension, the extension of moratorium is subject to this process of possible, possible signature gathering. So one would need, I think one would need to have it done at least thirty days before new ordinance, at least thirty days before the old, before the system moratorium expires, or we can create a new gap again.
I believe the current moratorium is set to expire mid to late June. So the fact that they're starting to talk about this in March for at least first reading and set a public hearing for an ordinance to extend the moratorium, I believe there.
Like to target it by middle of May, being in effect, I would think, otherwise you create this potential for a new gap again.
They're probably, if first readings next week, they're probably setting the public hearing for, and I'm guessing, I I've not read any of this, I believe it would be their first meeting in April, which would be April sixth.
There was also a discussion of the proposed model ordinance that was proposed by the people that were doing the petition. Recall that discussion?
Uh, I do recall that it was mentioned that some of those folks who circulated the petition to repeal the S T R ordinance itself had developed their own ordinance. I have not seen that.
Okay, because they had talked about distributing that too, or you could see that.
I said, it's not circulated down to my department.
Was it something that was given to city council, or you just were just not sure what happened to it?
I don't believe it was given to them. I think it was mentioned that they had to, I believe it was Mr. Penland, don't hold me to that, who was saying that they had a proposed ordinance. I'd have to go back and revisit the the work session video to to confirm exactly who it was.
I was just curious, so.
So that's what I have for you this evening. Thank you for your time.
There being no other items, take a, except the motion to adjourn.
So many.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, thank you both.